Okay, I have 5:30, so I want to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And the first item is the approval of the agenda, if everybody's had a chance to look at that.
Sub move.
All right, we have a motion, and in a couple of seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. And we're going to keep right on going, and we're going to ask Ms. Robin McKeithen to present the Bright Futures update. And you all should have a handout.
Right there.
Yes, right there in front of the, if you want to sit, you're welcome to stand, but I think they've got you wired up there, too.
Okay, great. So I'm Robin McKeithen, I know most of you, I'm the Assistant Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also the Coordinator for Bright Futures Beaufort County, which most of you know about. Just to give you a little bit of history, back in 2014, the Chamber took on Bright Futures. Joplin, Missouri Superintendent came to this room and presented Bright Futures. Potash Corp brought it here. Beaufort County Schools wanted Bright Futures in Beaufort County, but they could not do it through the school system, so the Chamber decided to step in. It's because of our strong relationship with Beaufort County Schools, the business community, and we knew that if a kid isn't having their basic needs met, then they would have a harder time learning. We also know our future workforce attends our schools, and we have to do all we can to help them. Bright Futures is a program under the Chamber Foundation. It was funded for the first three years by Potash Corp, which is now Nutrien. Last year, for the past two years, I've been grant writing just to fund the operational costs, how much it costs us at the Chamber to run the program. Bright Futures Beaufort County's mission statement is to create partnerships inspiring educational achievement by meeting students' basic needs and developing community support. We provide everything from food, clothing, furniture, lice kits, bed bug extermination, appliances, medical equipment, eye exams and eyeglasses, and much more. We're managed by an all-volunteer advisory board. There are 15 board members who are very active. Nicole Howard is our go-to person at Beaufort County Schools. She receives need requests from teachers, families, whomever, and if she doesn't have a way to meet those needs, then she sends us a need request at the Chamber, at Bright Futures. We post it on our Facebook page, and most of the time, all of our needs are met this way. People in the community just want to step out, step up, and help. Our community has been amazing in meeting the needs. Laurel Miller has been a great added asset to Bright Futures and to Beaufort County Schools, as she has direct contact with a lot of these families. I've given you a list of donations that have been received since 2014. There's quite a few, and if you look at it good, sometimes there'll be like one person's name, and it might be an entire household of items that have been donated. Just today, I received two messages from people who have beds and mattresses they want to donate, so I've reached out to Nicole and Laurel to see if we have families that need those. The second part of Bright Futures, and kind of the future of how it can continue to grow, is the site councils at the schools. It's up to each individual school whether they choose to have a site council or not. Most of them do. The most successful site councils are the ones where people at the school truly understand the value of business and church partnerships. These relationships grow over time, and the partners want to help the schools meet some of these longer-term needs. I'm going to give you a few examples. Eastern Elementary has great site council partners with First Christian Church and Vaden Beaufort Hospital. They provide clothes for clothes closets, gift cards for teachers for supplies. They do the family movie night that's downtown. They've done free health screenings for parents and staff. They've painted walls at the school. After the hurricane, they gave gift cards to help teachers again with classroom supplies, and they've also given headphones to all the students. Washington High School has great partnerships with Crestcom Bank and Church of the Good Shepherd. They've created a food and hygiene closet. They've prepared Thanksgiving meals for students and families and given out groceries over Christmas. They established the prom boutique. They have a mentoring program through Daughters of Worth. They've had college application help nights. Snowden has a very successful site council. They don't have business partnerships, but they have seven church partners that have done amazing things at Snowden. They stock their school supply and clothes closets. They volunteer for proctoring and reading. They have Angel Tree. They do Teacher Appreciation Week and a Back to School Bash. Other site councils have partners who've stepped in to provide Backpack Pals, provide PBIS incentives and trips, volunteer with the schools, provide Angel Tree at their places of business, held coat drives, provide staff appreciation meals, and much more. I could go on and on, but I can't stress enough that the future of the program is through the partnerships, through the Bright Futures site councils. Lastly, just one of our challenges, Nicole has done a great job, and we have gone in front of all the schools and talked to the teachers and counselors. There are still many teachers and counselors who are out there spending their own money buying supplies and things that the students need, so any help that y'all could give us to just continue to make them aware that Bright Futures is here to help. And just in closing, I'm more than willing to talk to anyone, anytime, about Bright Futures. If you've not liked the Bright Futures Facebook page, please do, and you can follow us. And that's it. I just wanted to update y'all, it's been a while since I've been here. I, along with Nicole and Laurel, are happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
I know that you've been operating off a grant. When does that grant run out, or has it run out?
Last year, we received four small grants. We are, like, I'm continually grant writing. Last year, I got enough to fund us, and so far this year, I'm good. So it's just going to be a yearly thing, yes.
Well, I want to personally thank you for what you've done, and we've corresponded before. I get a lot of requests, and I'm now better about saying, like you said, you have to remind people, I'm better about saying, you know, contact your counselor and ask them to contact, you know, Bright Futures.
Yeah, yeah.
But anyway, I really do appreciate, and I know the families of Beaufort County do. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, on to 3.2, Mr. Cott. Going to talk about wrestling at Southside High School, and there is an attachment, if you want to pull that up.
Trivia, Robin was a standout tennis player at Washington High School.
Yes, she was.
And her father was first athletic director in Beaufort County.
Yes, he was.
Okay. Rick sent these to me and asked me to present it. I do have a wrestling background. I think that it will help his athletes in other sports. A firm believer that it got me my football scholarship at East Carolina, having been a wrestler at Jacksonville High School. Wrestling mat, I'm going to recommend that you get four more feet on that mat, make it 42 by 42. That will give them a 32-foot wrestling area versus a 30, and it gives 10-foot of out-of-bounds. The High School Association is in litigation now with a wrestler that went off the mat, broke his neck four years ago. They haven't settled it yet. The National Federation's rule for wrestling is you have 10-foot of clearance where feasible. And that sort of opened it up for schools to have less than 10 feet of clearance from the bleachers. If you've got 10-foot of space on the mat, there's no way you can't have 10-foot, because the mat would be in the bleachers. So I think 42 would add to the cost, but it's a very pretty mat. Dolomar makes a good mat. I've checked with several that are familiar with that mat, because I was not, it was three-piece mat. This is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and a 2-foot section. He's asking Central Service to provide the wrestling mat, coaching stipends, which you would for any sport. School's going to do the uniforms travel. I'm assuming Southside's also going to do the head gears down under equipment. He's got flip charts for scoring, which are very incidental, you know, 40, 50 bucks. The last, I think the ones are still over Washington that I bought. Central Service, of course, will provide the travel, as you do for any sport, and the conference will set up the wrestling schedule for him. He's attached a list of students. I told him he had a proven interest, and having, you know, with that interest, I was contacted by a Northside parent that was interested in starting wrestling, and Mr. Clark was thinking about it, but he has since stepped back from that, but that may be something that you would be looking at also financing. If Washington has it Southside, then Northside coming in would be, the biggest expense is the mat. Schools paying for the uniforms, they'll pay for the officials. That's minor to the mat, but the mat should last for years and years. It'll last until I'm gone. So are there any questions about the request to add wrestling at Southside? He wants to start this year. He's got a quote for singlets, and he's got a quote for the mat of 8,900. I do not know if that includes tax. I doubt it. I think I paid $10,000 for the first mat I bought at Washington. That was in 1970, late '70s, early '80s.
What would the extra $4 by 4 be?
I would have to check on that. If that's not anything that Rick, I just saw these, I recommended him to get a 42. I think he just went with cost, trying to keep it down. I do not know what a 42 by 42. I'd have to check with you on that, but it's a nice-looking mat with, the thing I like is a 6-foot section. That way, two kids can pick it up and move it, where we had three sections of a mat, and it was, it took the whole team to be moving it. So storage and moving would be easier with that 6 and 6 and 6. I'm not sure about the 42. I can check, get back with you, but he's only asking for a 38. He could recommend, I mean, you could approve that and then get back with seeing what a price on 42 is. I think it'd be closer to the 10, but again, I don't think that price includes, oh, it does have transportation. Oh, there's the sales and everything. It's 9,500 he's looking for total on this one. You should have a copy of that.
Right, that's the 38.
That does include transportation, which is a surprise, it's not higher than that.
Well, this is not an action item, so it's just for information.
Barner for next year.
But if you would, when you can find out, I'd like for them to have what they need, and if a 42 by 42 meets their needs better, we certainly.
It's not like you have to buy a mat every five or 10 years. It'll be there for a long time.
He's probably trying to stay under $10,000, because when we, he and I initially had the conversation, the finance officer and I were able to secure about $10,000 on the current budget.
I shouldn't have said anything.
No, it's fine, it's honesty, that's good. So considering a column that was above $10,000, he may need to use some of his budget in order to secure the difference.
I'll look at that and get back to Mr. Cheeseman.
That'd be great. That'd be great. So I'd be interested to see what the difference in cost is, and see what his funding source would be.
Wrestling's winter sport?
Yes. So it gives, right now, all you have at Southside, you don't have swimming, you do not have indoor track, you've got basketball, boys, girls, and JV.
But we're also talking about a 1A school?
Yes. There are at least.
How many other 1A schools in the state?
There are at least 75, because the state will not have a state tournament for individual wrestling until there are at least 75 member schools playing it. For a long time, it was 1A and 2A had their state combined, and now you have a 1A state tournament for wrestling, you have a 2A, 3A, and 4A. When I came along in the dark ages, it was, they threw everybody in one gym, and one came out to win it, it was 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4A. Probably a long time ago, was it Mr. Hodges?
I'm not trying to commit anybody to anything, but if you have a student at Northside that does want to wrestle, I know we let a Southside student swim this year as an individual. Is that something you can do as an individual, unless you have a complete team?
The difference between swimming and wrestling is if Washington goes to Conley to wrestle Rose in Conley as a try match versus swimming, the Southside person could swim in one lane by themselves and compete, sort of like a track meet. But wrestling, it's a dual meet, you're one-on-one, a try, everybody wrestles everybody, and you would have 14 weight classes. So if you have one wrestler, you're going to go over there and pay the official. You wouldn't get many away matches. Probably a lot of them would come here, because they could get 13 forfeits, but it would be, now that person could go to, they could enter individual tournaments. They could go to tournaments on their own, they'd have to pay, the school would have to pay the fee, but hopefully they'd have more than one or two, they could send more than that.
I know every sport, I was just wondering, trying to figure out if there's a way.
It's not as easy as track or swimming.
Right, doesn't sound like it.
But it's something that they could attend and go to individually. Main thing is getting the coach. I guess they can practice in the cheering room, that practice room, they have cheerleaders, isn't that padded? It's not? Okay, I thought they had padding on the floor.
Northside does have cheerleading mats that are like these, well, not like these, but there's sections.
So that room is a pad for the cheerleaders, okay.
Yeah, I think you answered my question, so it takes 14 to make a team?
14 to make a team, but it would take seven to be able to tie, eight to win. If you got six wrestlers, first year I started wrestling at Washington, I had nine wrestlers, and we won three matches that year. And then the next year, we had 12. You have 14 weight classes, you can compete with six. If they all pin, you're still going to lose, because you're going to forfeit eight matches, and you get six points for a forfeit. Seven, if you got one by seven pins or seven forfeits, the other team would also have seven, you'd have a tie. But the thing about wrestling, not only is it a team sport, but you can send six individuals to the state or the regional, and they can do well on their own.
Washington's had several that have performed very well at the state level and won. So, but Southside thinks they have enough to make a team?
Yes.
Okay.
And you can see the attachment.
So many times, they tend to be football players, and they go on into that, if they're not playing basketball.
It certainly helped the football players. I had trouble getting football players out for wrestling. I couldn't get the heavyweights, the upper weights filled usually. I was solid in the lower weights. That's, to me, the great thing about wrestling. 98-pound wrestler can go out there and win state.
Right, right.
103 is the lowest weight class, and you've got 112, 119, it goes up. And it gives a little kid opportunity to be a state champion. You know, 98-pounder's not going to do much on a football team. It's not that they're not an athlete, it's just size limitation.
I understand. Well, thank you. Anybody else, any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move right on, and now we're Title I discussion with Mr. Greg Singleton.
Good evening. I have a handout for you. If you don't mind, if y'all could just fasten down. These are, uh, President Mr. Cheeseman, I had spoken about it this morning. You may recall that back in February, I believe it was, that we came to you, that we gave you some scenario, or what we actually did is we, using the current year's real numbers, we gave you some scenarios, some what-if scenarios, if you will, of adding PS Jones Middle School as a Title I school, what it would have looked like if we would have done it in the current year. Now, these first three pages that you see are those same scenarios from two months ago. And those scenarios were based on the allocation that we received in 2019, the current year, 2019 fiscal year, and it was also based on the poverty percentages in the 2019 fiscal year. Page one is actually what we did this year. This is current, it's actual, to the penny, what we did this year. And that scenario is A1, if you will, in the bottom left. When I came to you in February, I gave you two other scenarios. One of those scenarios is A2, which would have been what if we would have added PS Jones, and in order to do so, reduce other schools' per pupil allocation by an equal amount, if eligible, what it would have looked like. And you've seen this before, and you can see what it would have looked like. And then finally, the third scenario, Mr. Cheeseman asked me to prepare for you back then in February, was what it would have looked like if we had funded PS Jones and the other eight Title I schools using the same per pupil allocation, what would have been gained and what would have been lost. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time this evening going back over those, because that is, you know, what we talked about in February, using the FY19 allocation, the FY19 salaries, benefits, retirement, hospitalization, as well as the FY19 poverty percentages, okay? Now, what you've not seen before is on page four. Page four is the poverty percentages that were used in our FY19 allocation. And these are the poverty percentages that we received from Child Nutrition Services as of April 1st of 2018. Now, this is not a free and reduced number, because at 13 of our 14 schools, we no longer do free and reduced lunch applications. You may recall the community eligibility provision of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2011, which we were able to get in on during a year in which we had a higher-than-average number of students, whose families participated in a couple of federal programs noted as SNAP or TAN, or what we used to refer to as welfare or food stamps. These are the numbers and percentages of children in those schools in April of 2018 whose families received some supplemental federal assistance. And as you can see at the bottom, I would call your attention to the very bottom-right number, that as of April of 2018, and this is the percentages we used in our Title I school, per pupil allocation for schools, about 43% of our students, as of April last year, participated in those programs, and that was a decrease from previous year. You can also see what those percentages are for each school, and you can see who has a higher percentage, who has a lower percentage. Well, late last week, Gwen was able to get me those numbers for April of 2019, and that is what you will find on the next page. And that is where you will see a drastic change. First of all, I'll preface it by saying that the district overall, our percentages and numbers are higher as far as children who are in those families receiving that assistance than it was in April 2018, even at a time when the district's enrollment has decreased. But I would call your attention to two additional columns that I created on the right, and they're the Title I rank order columns. And this is the order in which we fund our Title I schools. It is based on the poverty percentage. And you can see that as far as the rank order compared to last year, some schools' place on the rank order of 1 through 9 increased, and some schools went down. For example, I would call your attention to John Cotton-Taylor. John Cotton-Taylor, of the nine possible schools that we were talking about back in February for the year that we're currently in, they had the second highest poverty percentage. They were second only to Estevie Snowden. But if you look at the April 2019 numbers, which is what we will use in building our Title I application for the upcoming school year, Taylor is now sixth in rank order, so they declined four slots. You'll also notice that Rula Face and PS Jones declined a spot. Now, PS Jones, of course, was not Title I in the current year, but I'm just saying if they had been included in that scenario. You'll also notice that several schools increased. Chalkalundy Middle notably increased three spaces, or three spots. They went from being the eighth-most impoverished to the fifth-most impoverished on that. So these are the numbers, and this is the order that we now have to go in when we look at next year's Title I plan. And I would tell you now to turn to the next page. Now, what I have here are three additional scenarios, and this is a non-action item, and this is for your information, and this is for you to be thinking about as we hopefully in the next 30 days will receive a planning allotment from the Department of Public Instruction and in earnest begin our work in building the Title I application for next year. And this is not looking at any set of sites, it's not looking at anything that we pay off the top. It's not looking at administration, or homelessness, or foster care transportation, or the preschool program, or any type of district instructional initiative. We're looking solely at the funds that we send out to those schools, where those decisions are made by, with the principal and the school improvement team, with input from district staff. What I have done is I have placed the schools in their rank order on these next three pages. You'll see Taylor is number six, Chalkalundy Middle is higher than it was in the past. Now, scenario B1 is a scenario where we're saying what if, looking into next year, our goal was to maintain the eight Title I schools that we currently have. That is to not add PS Jones as a Title I school, okay, to do what we did this year. Now, what we're doing here is, since we, A, do not yet have a planning department from the planning allocation, and since we, B, do not have finalized salaries or fixed costs such as retirement or hospitalization, in speaking with Mr. Cheeseman, I build a scenario using the same numbers that we had as of last year, with the exception of we've now plugged in the poverty percentages that we will have to use for the FY20 allocation. That's the reason that the minimum per pupil amount has gone down, because the number of children who have received assistance has gone up. And if we were to say tonight, if I had a crystal ball, and I said, well, I know we're going to get the same amount of money, and I know all the costs are going to be same, and all I had to do is change the poverty percentages around, you can take a look at what the schools would have received, and you can take a look in this column here, and you can see at the FY19 fixed cost, using the FY20 poverty percentages, for those schools, would they have an increase or a decrease from last year and how much, all right? And you can see that at Snowden and Eastern, they would have been about the same. Chalkalundy Primary would have lost a very small amount of money. John Small would have lost a small amount of money. Chalkalundy Middle gains $90,000 from the previous year. But now, let me remind you that their place in the poverty percentage increased three spots. Moving forward, you'd see that Taylor would lose $56,000, and they're at least going to lose, if that were to be the case, they'd at least lose one of their current positions, a teacher-assisted position, as well as any discretionary spending that they've used in Title I, such as supplies, materials, professional development, tutoring, et cetera. In addition, Northeast Elementary would lose $32,000, and with a loss of $32,000, they cannot make it up in supplies and materials. We'd have to cut a teaching position. Now, that is not to say that the district could come along and pick up part of a teaching position from local fund, but you may not be in a position that you're able to do that. I'm trying to give you a worst-case scenario and telling you this is what it could look like, okay? All right? And then Bath was cut a very small amount, but remember, Bath is funded at the minimum level of $410.51 a child. When you look at that actual PPA, in order to get to a zero, I did go to five decimal places, they will actually, in their application, we will round up or round down, but that's just the way that my, the matrix of my spreadsheet worked. Now, this basically is looking at next year, what it might look like if we don't add PS Jones. Now, we might get a $200,000 increase in Title I, or we might get a decrease. So again, nothing is definite about that, okay? Does anyone have any questions on this? Again, this is just looking down the road at what might be.
Are you getting any kind of feedback on hypothetically what we're saying?
I was at a regional meeting of federal programs, with federal programs directors yesterday.
Okay.
And I did have the, or the Assistant Director, as well as an Assistant Director in the Division of School Business and Finance. We're hearing at the national level, we might be between what the Congress puts out and the President agrees to, it might be a 1.6% overall increase or something. That doesn't necessarily mean that for North Carolina, but for them to tell me that, they're thinking that maybe there may be a small increase. Keep in mind that that funding formula, the amount that we get, is not based on the numbers here, it's based on an entirely different set of numbers from the United States SCS Bureau and their numbers for poverty. And that's where. And that's where they get those numbers. And then it's a formula-based allocation, part of its poverty, part of its population. Now, while our population in the age 5 to 17-year-old group in Beaufort County may have gone down, and that's not because necessarily of charters, or because of homeschooling or anything else, it's just a lower birth rate, because the county is getting smaller in that age group. Your poverty percentages here have gone up, so they may take that into consideration. So it may weigh out, and you could even out. But unfortunately, I do not know what our allocation will be. I did ask the question, since we were told that the application must be completed and is due by midnight on June 30th. I simply said, it's impossible for me to complete an application by June 30th if I don't know what the allocation will be by June 1st. And the individual from the school finance division said, well, we're working as hard as we can to get those out, at which time I asked the assistant director at federal program monitoring, what are we going to do if we don't have an allocation by June 1st? And he said, we may have to delay the application, which, as you will recall, that's what we've done for the last three years because of that, and we've not gotten this thing approved locally till July, and the due date was pushed back until August. So I wish I had a better answer for you.
Well, I appreciate it. All right.
There's two additional scenarios that Mr. Cheeseman asked me to put together. He said, let's take a look at next year using these FY20 poverty percentages. What would it look like if we did add P.S. Jones, if everything remained the same, which we know this may look different? And you can look at that same box, and you can read the statement. You know, basically, what would the other eight schools be losing next year if we looked at adding P.S. Jones? And each school is losing something, and pretty much everyone besides Chalkwindy Primary that's on the losing end is going to lose a staff member. Now, again, Chalkwindy Middle, because they went up, and because we're trying to fund Taylor as much as we can to not lose more than a second position, which will be gaining funds. So they have a small loss from scenario B1, but it's still much more than they received this year. Taylor, which, Taylor would now be into losing a second staff member, either a TA or a teacher under this scenario. P.S. Jones, if you take, the salary of beginning teachers is about $35,000. They would have enough money to hire, if they chose, up to four staff members, but they could also use that money for other approved appropriate uses as well. But if, a lot of times, you guys, y'all have told me you like to look at people. With that, at $246,000, that's, you can easily fund, not just 4A, you could fund 4A, 3A, or 4 teachers probably on the salary scale at that amount. Northeast's loss would stay at one teacher. And of course, Bath, we're still funding them at the minimum level, so no change. The final scenario Mr. Cheeseman asked me to put together was B3, and that's, and all these are, you know, B1 relates, or A1 relates to B1 and so forth. So in B3, it's similar to the A3 scenario, in which we did the actual PPA at the same for all schools, which is $568.52. And on this scenario, I can just tell you, the big difference here is Eastern is now into losing a second teacher of their five. They would go from five to, they'd go from five teachers to three. Snowden's still a loss of a teacher. Chalkwindy Primary still has not lost a teacher, but they've still lost a lot of discretionary spending. John Small's still at a one teacher loss in all their discretionary spending. Chalkwindy Middle is at a loss, but it's still a gain from the current year. And Taylor probably is going to stay at that second staff member, depending on what the salaries are, losing a second staff member. Taylor currently funds two teachers and four TAs. So without the P.S. Jones, they're losing one TA. With P.S. Jones, they're either losing two TAs or a teacher and a TA. P.S. Jones is the big winner on this scenario, because they're not 260. They could fund easily five teachers. Northeast's loss are less than B1 under this scenario, but still not enough to make up that teacher they lost. And on this scenario, Bath would gain quite a bit, but not enough for a second teacher. So these, this is just to give you some information and some perspective. It is still a big what-if. My hope is in that in the next 30 days, that I will know what our allocation is. I will have a better hand of what our careover will look like. We do have to try to, we careover enough to get us started for the next year, what our final spending's going to look like. I'll also know more what the General Assembly, maybe their plan is, and we can start computing some salaries and benefits. So probably the next time that I come to you, I will have some live scenarios. I think Mr. Cheeseman would like me to come one more time when I have the most current data as for information item, to give you some scenarios, to give you some feedback as far as what you'd like for me to bring you as a final application. But I'd be glad to take any questions that you have at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Greg, you may not be the answer to this. This is just, I guess, kind of a curious question. When you look at the percentage of impoverished students from school to school, and I'm looking, basically what I'm doing is comparing the feeder schools to the high school.
Yes, sir.
Why does there seem to be such a big drop-off in percentage when they get to high school?
We had that question last time, and these are numbers that I do receive from Gwen. It is hard for me to explain under CEP. When we used to do the free and reduced applications, I had a pretty easy explanation. You see, what would happen with the application is we had a lot of success getting the application back from younger children. The teachers would put it home in the book site, they'd fill it out, the parents would send it back. And what would happen with the older children, and I saw this when I was at P.S. Jones, is many times those children didn't take the application home. They, under the old system, it was a little more apparent of who was having to pay for lunch and who wasn't, okay? Now, under this scenario, I don't even, I have no idea who these children are who are getting, you know? So it's hard to say. If you look this year at Southside, you know, they're at 59. Chalkwindy Middle's at 64. Chalkwindy Primary is hovering around, you know, 66. I take those three. But that proves exactly your point there.
Right.
It seems to be lower as they get into high school. Gwen might have a better insight on that than me, as your nutrition person. I just get the numbers from her.
Yeah.
So I wish I had a better answer for you, I really do.
All right.
More to come. There will be. Mr. Cheeseman, is there anything else you think we need to touch?
No, I think you did a great job. Congratulations.
Well, hopefully I'll have some real numbers the next time I see you.
Thank you. Good news. Okay, we're going to go to 3.4, the coding grant, and we'll hear from Andrea Lilly, our executive director for instructional services.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is not an attachment there? Okay. You'll be sending it to him? Okay. There's a grant that you should be aware of, and I wanted to give you some information on that tonight. It is a continuation from the coding grant that we received last year from the NCDPI. And this year, we had Amy Bennett and Betty Jane Green get together and wrote a grant, and they named it Prepare the Future Workforce in Coding and Mobile App Development. This grant, if received, will be funded through NCDPI without a match needed by Beaufort County Schools. By partnering with local industry and community leaders, this grant is designed to help build curricular programs, as well as professional development for teachers and administrators, development of computer science curriculum for 612 students, engagement and industry partners to support connections between the VCS curriculum, future career opportunities for students, and industry demand. The grant's written for $79,117, I'm sorry, $79,117.96. The students will benefit through computer science career fairs, robotics programs at the schools, site visits to local businesses, internships being available to students, as well as opportunities for VCS students to create things like webpages, apps, and 3D-printed models for local businesses. Do you have any questions?
You might have said, but what age group will this apply?
This would be all K-12.
All K-12, okay.
It's middle school focused, but middle school and high school.
When would you hear back?
It's due May 15th, and we will hear back sometime around, probably summer.
Summer, so it could be something, if you get the grant, you can implement what you're going to do with it in the fall.
Yes, we're planning on the robotics program to begin next year.
Okay, great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Lilly.
Thank you.
We're going to go on now. We're going to have Mr. Cheeseman about the STEM grant.
Sure. Just wanted to give you an update. I spoke with Jason Rochelle and one of his colleagues about the idea of revising our project management plan to step away from the Ed Center, look at potentially three academy sites at three high schools, excluding early college. They were in favor of us submitting a revised proposal for the management plan. They would like us to have that into them here shortly in May, so they can just have dialogue about it to give us guidance. So in short, they've delayed the grant for us, meaning they haven't started the clock, and they're, we're very amenable to new ideas. So with that, they still want us to have the grant, they still want us to move forward with the ideas, as long as the integrity of the original grant does not change. Right now, they're, you know, looking at why the location would change, but as long as the integrity and the intent does not change, you know, we hope to see great outcomes to that. So our instructional team, led by Ms. Lilly, is putting together some ideas around that project management plan, and we'll submit that to Golden Leaf, and then we'll have follow-up meetings with them, as they really want this project to happen on our behalf. So just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you so much. Any questions? All right, we're going to keep going. Policy 7440. Mr. Dunn, you're up.
Yes, ma'am.
There you go.
This policy is up for revision, first reading tonight. Policy 7440, and there's a 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down, talks about employee-initiated transfer requests. I believe when this policy was written, at that time, we, I think, most school systems generally had a better idea of budgets, and you could really do, complete a lot of staffing by June 30th. Unfortunately, now, we don't get a lot of state, and as Mr. Singleton alluded to, federal information until late in the summer, and because we don't get definite budgets from the state and from the federal government, we don't post positions, or as many positions as we may have, because we're not going to hire somebody until we make sure we have the money to pay for them. So what happens is, if we continue with this policy, that if I, as an employee, want to voluntarily transfer, then what may happen is, we get the money in June, excuse me, in July, and then I've missed my window. And after polling the principals, I would say it's about, it has been a 70-30 split. There are a few of our folks who would like to hang on to the June 30th deadline, but the vast majority realize that they've hired a lot of folks from in and within beyond that deadline. And so our procedure doesn't exactly match our policy based on the new budget deadlines. So what I would be asking for a future vote on would be, as you can see the changes, we would delete the June 30th deadline for employee-initiated transfer and just change it to completed by the first teacher workday, because that's more realistic with when we have vacancies posted. It still gives a principal the opportunity to hold a person for 30 days, so even if I make the jump in July 31st, I, in theory, may stay in my current role till August 31st and then switch over to the new school. But if we follow the June 30th deadline, then it really inhibits our own employees from possibly transferring. So it's just trying to be a little more employee-friendly when it comes to those types of things.
First teacher workday, meaning the first day that the teachers will come back to school?
Right, on the new, on the traditional schedule.
So in August.
Which is tough.
Yes, it would, depending, but I didn't set a date, because you never know with the calendar when the first teacher workday might be.
Right, right. Ideally, that would not be what we wanted anybody to do to their principal.
No, but...
I could see some principals being...
But that's, that's why I'd say, I mean, I spoke with our folks, and that's, you know, the, our practice has been throughout the last five years, the first teacher workday. So we, we pretty much stuck with that, but we just weren't matching our board policy. And the reason we're doing that, honestly, is just late numbers on budgets and posting vacancies.
I don't think really and truly it happens that much.
We don't, we rarely have an August...
It's already been decided long before.
Usually, most of our folks, it's about, what really tends to happen is, the week after the 4th of July is about when we've been getting all of our budgets, or at least enough of a projection that we feel confident to post, and that's when it's really happening, mid-July, which is still within the 30-day window that you could move schools, and it allows the other person to hire. So it does, you know, it's rare that we have anybody really, really late in the year unless we have a last-minute resignation from a dream job somewhere.
Right, right. Okay. Well, this was for first reads, so...
Yes, ma'am.
If there aren't any questions, we're going to let you go on to the next thing, which is student records.
Just wanted to remind the board that a few years ago, that we proposed moving to an online transcript ordering service, so that our former students would order their transcripts, would get employee verifications from businesses, from banks for, from mortgages, things of that nature, that we would, you know, we have been essentially giving away transcripts. The high schools charge a fee if you get your transcript within the first three years after you graduate. After that, they transfer the records here to central office, and we give them to you, which is very nice, but we're, at the same time, we're paying to have those records stored, to have those records scanned. And so we had talked to you guys, and you had approved moving to a system where we would electronically store the records and also charge a fee, and at the time, we didn't have the technology in place to make that happen. We do now. And so we're going to be making that transition this summer, and I just wanted to make you aware of it, because it got delayed, but it is now on track. So...
Any questions?
Did you submit a fee?
$10 for a transcript of that. The company that handles the transaction takes a percentage and then sends us a check, and we don't have to handle money.
All right. If there are no questions, we, thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Yes, ma'am.
We are on to 4.1, which is the local current expense budget, and you should be getting a handout.
Yes. So what you have in front of you, yeah, does everyone have a copy?
Got your copy here.
Yeah, you can take it. Yeah, you can take it. That is a hard copy of the presentation that's going to come behind you on the screen, so everyone else may, or may not be able to see that.
There you go.
All right. So in short, I did a presentation for the county commissioners back, I think, about three or four weeks after I joined your team, hello there in the dark. So...
Sorry. Thirty seconds.
And the presentation's over. Thank you. But anyway, we did the presentation for the county commissioners, so some of this will be a repeat. But in that process, I came to you and said, these are some of the things I'm going to say to them, and just wanted your judgment on it. So tonight, tomorrow, Thursday morning, if there are things you'd like me to add or subtract, this is really just for where you feel and think about it. So in short, when we get together on Thursday, we're going to introduce each other on Board of Education, county commissioners. I did ask or invite directors and principals to be the fly on the wall, to be in the room, if they would like to hear about the ORED study, just so they hear firsthand from Matthew Palmer and his group coming in. I think it's really important that your principals are in the loop. But ultimately, we want to talk about what 100% means. I know that when Greg Singleton talked about percentages, well, we're really talking about not just our students, but we're talking about our employees. So when you look at school funding, you're not just looking at what children get, you're really talking about how that school funding impacts all the stakeholders, all the way back down into the community, in terms of businesses, who we graduate, how it works. But we're just trying to hammer the point home that we'd really like to be funded at 100%. I understand what reality is, but we're always going to seek the best. So this iceberg really just gives you an understanding of what you see in the community versus really what goes on. So above the waterline is essentially the climate, below the waterline is the culture, and what moves the actual iceberg is below the waterline. And so considering, to this point, is our county commissioners see things, hear things, interact with things, but they may not understand the depth of school finance. And what I'm learning over my course of being a superintendent, and having been in education for almost 25 years, is that school finance is different than any other beast, and typically, county commissioners are not schooled in school finance and what it means, and that's where Willie Matt comes in with all of his budget line items. And so in short, you have a decision-making population who doesn't necessarily understand the intricacies of what he's doing with the finances. But I'm just trying to put that into a visual for them, so they understand that this budget is much deeper, much bigger than what most of the community will ever understand. As an example, in my former position, you know, we had to riff TAs, but I also built a $1.4 million football field across the street. So when you look at, from a community point of view, they don't understand how you can riff people but build new things, and it comes down to budget line items. So this picture, although I'll spend just a little bit of time, should help our county commissioners to understand that what you're dealing with is far deeper than anyone else understands. Always know that our core business in Beaufort County Schools is teaching and learning. Sounds obvious, but a lot of times it's not. When you're speaking with third-party vendors, when you're speaking with community members, they don't understand that your decisions, even when you're talking about transportation, school nutrition, maintenance, custodial staff, school nurses, really boils back down to what's going on inside the classroom. And so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about how our county commissioners, how our community should really be looking at the processes of teaching and learning. When you're talking about athletics, when you're talking about theater and art... And so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about how our county commissioners, how our community should really be looking at the processes of teaching and learning. When you're talking about athletics, when you're talking about theater and arts, and you're talking about mentoring programs, whatever it is, wellness of children, wellness of adults, you're still coming back to that teaching and learning and that's our core business. And having been a teacher for 14 years inside the classroom, what I did, what our teachers do is education, but everything around it in terms of your decision-making is really about the business of education. So in short, in three words, our business is about teaching and learning. So to go back, and this is to give county commissioners an understanding of where we are to where we'd like to go to and, and we can spend a little bit of time with them. But you had 12 eligible schools in 2017, 2018 to actually receive a school performance grade. EdTech does not, and Eastern Elementary does not. They typically receive the grade of whatever JCT receives, all right, third-grade population. But if you look at your numbers, just in terms of growth, two of your schools exceeded, four of your schools did not. Six of your schools were right where you would believe expectation is. So if you're meeting growth or you met growth, fine, that's where we want you to be. You're proficient, have at it. But in short, as a school system, our goal should be 100% meet or exceeds growth. You want to make sure that students are moving, teachers are moving in their capacity, but you want the county commissioners to understand that there is a percentage of your schools that did not meet their growth, even though they may have scored a C or better. In short, on the next page, your school performance grades from '27, '28, and you reviewed these already or should have with your team back in October, they should have been finalized, I believe. And if you notice, you have three Ds. And right there is the cut line. C or above, not low performing. D or below, low performing by state. But with that, you want to make sure that you get those Ds moving, but ultimately, you know, you want to try to get as high as you can, meaning you have great student outcomes, great teaching and learning, and what's happening in the classroom is authentic. Because right now, you're on an 80-20% split of proficiency versus growth. And of course, in the state legislature, they're looking at a 50-50, but that hasn't been approved yet, so this might change over time. But if you notice the differential on the next page, if right now, what's going on in classes on 2018, 2019, right now in school where we are today, you could walk in tomorrow and look at a principal and say, what do you think your projection's going to be? And as this team, whose president knows, I met with principals on May 1st, right here in this room, and I said, here you are in the final stretch run and I want to know specifically, what are you doing for all children, all adults in the building to really get that quarter-turn push in the last part of that Kentucky Derby, right? But right here, specifically, you're on the final leg of this race. And if you look at those projections and realize, you have four schools, maybe five, and I wrote five there in plus three, plus two. In your current grades from last school year, you had five schools very close to the bubble. Meaning, if an A is an 85 through 100 on that 15-point scale and a B is 70 to 84.9, you had, on a 15-point scale, five schools who were right around four or five points from hitting the next level. Well, that means that could be a few students, that could be a handful of students, that could be a great test day, that could have been just an off day for people. But from the previous page to this one, notice, if we get what we're hoping for at the end of this school year, you would have five schools specifically make increases. Two would go from a D to a C, three would go from a C to a B. And that is if your principals, your teachers, your community, our community, our principals, our teachers can bring that to fruition at the very end, where our kids feel great about their learning and you could see coming out of low performing very quickly. And that's important for our county commissioners to understand that their investment in what's going on in that teaching and learning process comes down to one day sometimes in terms of what the ultimate performance looks like. So what do we really want Beaufort County Schools? Next page, we want 100% of our schools to meet or exceed growth. And what I'm looking at is school performance grades of at least a C or better. That's what it means on that slide. And why does that matter? Well, it really gets the attention of a lot of people to really celebrate the success of what your teachers and teacher assistants and school nutrition people, everybody involved in that process, that is something to feel remarkable about, not just good about, but remarkable about. And I think last year, there were roughly 10 school districts in the state of North Carolina who had 100% meets or exceeds. I'm very excited to say that I'm accustomed to that expectation and that's what drives us a bit in terms of what our outcomes would be. But at the end of the day, you want students to have a high-quality education. And unfortunately, the way North Carolina rates us and the way communities and potential people moving to the community understand us initially is through a report card. So at the end of the day, we don't want children to have a test score assigned to them, you want them to have a high-quality education, but from the business that you're running, this matters. And we need the county commissioners to be on our side with that. So the next page, when you look at traditional or zero-based budgeting, this goes back to the comment I made to them, that we're looking at every line item, as Willie Mack can tell you. I think your budget this year was presented a little differently, so you had every line item. And then here are the two pages of focus areas that are unchanged, I won't spend a lot of time with it, but this is what we specifically showed them two or three months ago when I met with them around what we're really trying to do, what impacts us, what works, what doesn't work on those two pages. And ultimately, again, mental health and wellness matters. We have grants that are helping us with that now. Look, right in the middle of the second portion of this, employee contract decisions. This is that time of year of May and June where everybody gets nervous, you know, just understanding what they're trying to do, where they're going to be, and understanding what allocations look like. And of course, safety and security, you know, if this list were prioritized, that would be right at the top of that list. So these are focus areas that we can talk to the county about on Thursday and why their money matters and why it matters to Beaufort County Schools. And then if you look at academics on the next page, ultimately, as a goal, you really need to be able to communicate with people of, what do you want to do and where do you want to go? And in my experiences, county commissioners will say, look, if we give you this funding, what's that going to look like and how fast is the turnaround? Usually, that's what people want to know. I'm accustomed to AOL and dial-up. Other people are used to high-speed internet. But right now, people want to see a bang for the buck or a return on the investment. So in short, over three years, we'd like to see every school raise their performance grade and ultimately have growth, either meeting or exceeding that growth for three consecutive years at a school site. What that means is you have sustainability, you have programs in place, and you have funding structures that are not a one-hit wonder and that matters to us. And then finally, the barriers. And as Willie Mack and Mr. Hudson said in the last meeting, keep it simple. Well, you could peel this onion back and complain about every single barrier that's here and have sub-litters on items, but in short, you and I deal with state and federal changes, increase in benefits, costs that we can't control, changes in utility and fuel costs. So it's very important that our county commissioners understand that we're at the mercy of things around us and that surround us in negative ways. So what happens if they don't fund us accordingly? They're going to say, what type of plan do you have? So the next page, personnel impacts. Well, right now, your budget is somewhere between, and I'm sure my teammates will correct me, but somewhere between 84% to 87% of your budget is people. And so if you're not funded in that manner, then you impact people. And these are some of the impacts that would happen. We look at potentially 15 teacher positions would have to reduce down, meaning we would try to save, save personnel, but we would have to close out positions, possibly transfer people across the district and try to help them. These positions would close out from retirements, people who left, people who are on time limited with eight-time limited positions. So we'd have to be very, very thoughtful about what we would do with that if we're not funded in its entirety. So in short, right now, Willie Mack has received a preliminary number of projections of the one for last year, and this is 6,501. I'm a bit skeptical about that number because this is a planning allotment number, which in school finance, you know, having approved a lot, excuse me, finance adjustments, that this number may go down slightly when DPI sees it again. This number, if they fund us somewhere during the course of the year, they might pull money back from us or positions back, so that's solely a starting point. But that's good for our county commissioners to understand that it's not as dramatically low as they thought it was, or at least the state doesn't believe it is. So their conversation pieces around, hey, I hear your numbers are going down, so we may want to reduce your rates. Well, whether you have two children on the bus or 30 children on the bus, you're still paying the same for the fuel because you're still running that route. So I think it's important that they see that number live. Now, your local expenditures, 17 million, that's a number that we think is real and believe that we've narrowed it down based off of zero-based budgeting. We believe that we understand every line item, we understand what we're asking for, we know it's an increase. And then capital outlay, well, what was the initial amount, what's the real amount and what's the urgent amount, as I believe the board asked me for. So the real amount is 15 million for your capital outlay, but on that list that we all put together, if you take out the mobile trailers and all those structures, then that list cuts down to about 8.6 million. But looking at that list and restructuring, structuring that list in an urgent sense, and I want to thank Stan Hudson for doing so, working diligently with Willie Mack around that, your most emergent items that we have looked at, and you'll see that list coming to you, is about 1.2 million. Meaning, if the county commissioners turn around and say, what do you need this moment? And can we do an immediate plan of action, a mid-range plan of action, and a long-range plan of action, we think 1.2 million. All right? So considering our annual budget is $74.6 million, and so why would that be the case where if your numbers are slightly going down, but all the cost, if your student enrollment is slightly going down based on birth rates and other things that Greg Singleton talked about, costs are just going up? And so I just want to make sure our county understands that even though you have less children in the room or less staff, it doesn't mean that the costs should go down. So considering that, our goal's 100% funding, that's what we're always going to ask for, I understand realities, but if you'd like to add or subtract to that, feel free. And Willie Mack's here to answer any finance questions. Ms. Booth, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, I thought you were handing it out. Okay.
Just looking for approval for...
Not even approval as a former group, just want you to look through it, tear it apart, give me a call tonight, tomorrow, Thursday morning, if there's something you want to add that you feel very passionate about, something that you want to strike out.
Does this need to move off the action list then? Because it's...
Well, he's going to ask you to approve the actual funding of capital and the local. This is just the conversation.
I got you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we are to the capital outlay budget approval. And once again, I've got Mr. Cheeseman up here, I guess.
This is going to be Willie Mack?
We also have the local piece as well. I'm following up on his presentation.
Yeah, we have.
On the handout that you were given, I believe at last meeting, we talked about, or you all talked about the desire not to expend any more fund balance than we currently are working on. So this sheet basically takes the $300,000 that was in the budget that was presented to you earlier and moves it up into a requested line for funding from the county. Basically, the sheet itself stays pretty much the same, except you will go down and where we are currently projecting fund balance to be spent in the fiscal year 19 to be about $424,000. That's where I included that figure to get it to balance out for you because the overall budget and the items that we described and the differences are reflected in changes in the planning allotments that we're looking for that may or may not have an increase coming from the state based on whether they are dollar allotment, a position allotment, or months of employment allotment. Keep in mind that, as we talked earlier, these are based on our current employees and the anticipated 3% across the board. But based on vacancies that we may have, the replacements that we have, and the funding that we may or may not receive, where I have someone placed in this budget will be greatly impacted by July and August and I may actually be redoing the entire personnel piece of the budget. So are you all comfortable with this proposed budget to move forward for the superintendent?
And you want, you want action for both the local and for the capital, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, you want a local...
If you want to wait, we'll do them both together, that'd be fine as well.
I'll leave that to the chairman to...
Well, let's go ahead and decide on this since it's in front of us in that way. Any questions when they have on the capital can be separate. And this is kind of a sidebar, I don't know that it has any impact on this, but we talked a little bit at our last meeting about what, if any, impact there was on the SRO funding and whether or not we have to give a portion of that to the charter schools even though all the positions are not filled. Did we find out?
That's information we're trying to still seek and bring back. So I don't have that information that's...
If we are, then we're losing twice.
Right.
We're losing it because we're giving the money back and we're losing because we're giving money away that we never got to keep to begin with.
We don't believe in our, in our MOU right now that we get to keep any of that type of funding. So some of the conversation was if, you know, if we received the funding directly but only had, you know, say eight SROs instead of 14 as an example, that we got to keep the difference. We don't see anything in our MOU right now that states that. So there's still greater conversation to be had with the department.
Do you think there's a chance in that, instead of them giving us the money, they just pay the SROs at their own budget and not, they don't give us the money?
To be honest with you, I think there's still, my answer is no. I don't think there's a chance of that, and let me tell you why. Unless the state allocates a different funding pathway so they can track it accordingly, then I think that you're really looking to your county commissioners, very similar to how lottery funds are dropped. And so I think they're just really trying to audit the system in that regard, but it doesn't hurt to ask. So we're trying to engage in those conversations.
All right. All right. So...
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the fiscal year 20 local requested budget.
Second?
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions before we take a vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Now, we're going to go to the capital outlay budget. Are you going to present that or...
Willie Mack's here to talk about it and so is Stan. Just in terms of what you see on your capital, and Willie Mack jump in wherever and Stan jump in wherever, specifically, Mr. Hudson did a nice job of going back and prioritizing these. You should see it in yellow. I want to, again, thank you for working on this with us. But they prioritized it, so you see it in yellow on the right-hand side, they tried to total sections for you. If you're confident with this, this is how we would have conversations with the county commissioners, if they were to ask us what's most important to you, you know, why do you want to go in this way? But at the same time, that's how we came up with the $1.2 million. The interesting part about this is it's just the list. So even with or without funding, you're still able to manipulate it. So even after we go to the county commissioners and say, this is what our thinking is, whatever money they choose to give to you and whatever projects we need to have done, we're still going to come back to you, to the board and say, you know, now that we know exactly what our funding is, how would you like to prioritize this?
Okay, good.
And so this is just a starting point, just to be able to move the process forward since we're trying to show the whole story. And then once we understand the funding, then you get to make those decisions.
It's just amazing that a, it's like a fourth of it is from technology that's coming out of it, is that about right?
I believe so. Mr. Malek has some needs specifically to work in our district.
Yeah.
I did have a question and I know we're going to come back to it, so I don't mean to waste everybody's time, but didn't we buy a lift a year or two ago?
It involved a trailer lift just about six years ago, but this is a two-man scissor lift that we can take inside the gymnasiums.
I thought that's what we got so we could change bulbs and stuff in the gymnasiums.
It's a one-person lift and our light fixture would require two people to hold on to them to change them from a ballast over to a LED. The fixtures are so massive that they're hard for one person to hold. That would all prior to me coming to trailer lift.
Sounds like maybe we didn't need to buy that.
Even though I live in the Southside School anyway, the door openings are too narrow. They didn't put removable luggins, which is the center device, the device in the door. Southside, they didn't put any, they're all the way within the infixable.
I know I was here when we bought a lift, I just wondered, did we buy the wrong lift? Why are we buying another lift? And what do we need, the tractor with the loader, since that's at the very top for $58,000?
My tractors were 1907, new 30 and 1977, and we're getting in disrepair, they stay in the shop as much as we keep them out. Matter of fact, one's been there for six months or more, can't find a part to fix them on.
And what are we doing with them?
We use them for landscaping in general, removing the dirt, excavation, keeping our roads up, playgrounds, put mulch in. Schools actually use them. We have one that we love in schools for their aerator and put out their fertilizer. they got their fertilizer and the dirt deters and weed.
And to sub that out, it would be a lot more than $58,000, is that worth saying?
Well, we're the lifespan of the use of the tractor most difficult.
Okay. Just wanted you to say it.
Yeah, and we'll go over all this when we actually get funded, right? Okay. All right. Does anybody have any other questions, since we can change the priority, once we know what we're working with? A motion?
I'm going to, I'll go ahead and make the motion for the capital outlay.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we've got field trip approval, Mr. Cheeseman.
Willie Mack, thank you, Stan, thank you very much. Ms. Booth, I appreciate your help. Members of the board below, you'll see that there are three field trips.
I'm getting it up.
Thanks, Josh.
That's the wild side of the night.
Yeah, I didn't know what's going on. All right, so three field trips, two for the current school year or just afterwards, one for next year, Northeast Elementary School band competition for both Bath Elementary and Northeast Elementary School band students going by charter bus, June 1st. Also, Northside High School for June 15th through 21st, Fayetteville State University for JRTC. Please notice the differentiation in terms of chaperones, although on the bus, there would not be a female chaperone traveling on the mode of transportation at the actual site. They're gender-specific housing, so there will be female chaperones with female students and vice versa, male and male. P.S. Jones Middle School, April 29th through May 1st of next school year, they're planning their eighth-grade trip to DC to visit the nation's capital. So considering, those are the field trips that have been requested by our principals.
Move approval.
Say it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Now, Michael?
Yes, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318, about 11A1 and 8, reveal disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C-321.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, we are in closed session. Thank you, everyone. All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, and is there any other business that needs to come before the board?
You should see or check your email, as I forwarded the NC State ORED study to you, those results, which are a little bit different in terms of the conversations that I had with Matthew Palmer like three weeks ago. So considering that, I'm very excited to see what that presentation looks like this Thursday, because they made some changes since I spoke with them. But with that, Brian Allegood and I had text communication last Friday seeking that document, and they sent it to me late yesterday afternoon, so please check your email, so you have knowledge before you come in Thursday.
Is there anyone that is not going to be able to attend Thursday, so Lisa has a head count as far as lunch? Everybody here is going to be here Thursday? Okay.
What time? 12:00?
12:00, right.
I may be a few minutes late, I got to go from Wilson.
And I want to take this time, because by the time this goes on the air, a lot of games will be over, but I want to congratulate and wish all the love to our athletic teams across the county who are participating in tournaments. May you play at your highest level of excellence, travel safe, and make your school proud. All right, is anything else?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Say it.
Okay. All those in favor? All right, everybody have a good evening.